We are? Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2025 Bruce Township Planning Commission Meeting, or, oh, excuse me, December 3rd, immediate correction here. Our start time is approximately 7:03 PM.
Six.
Okay, well, I mean, you gotta start all over again. Good evening and welcome to the December 3rd, 2025 Bruce Township Planning Commission Meeting. Our start time is 6:03 PM. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Vincent.
Stevens.
Here.
Randy Cant.
Here.
Voice.
Here.
Barnett.
Here.
Blaylock.
Here.
Jay Vincent.
Agelstein.
Down here. Okay, we have a quorum. Before we start the business part of the meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've not already done so, please sign in, the sign in sheet along the wall over here. This is a Bruce Township Planning Commission Public Business Meeting that includes seven Bruce Township residents appointed by the Bruce Township Board of Trustees. In addition, we have a township employee, Dana Buchanan, who is the Township Planning Coordinator, and for professional planning advisement, Joe Tangeri from Giffords Webster. We do welcome public comments at various points in our agenda. Tonight, there will be one opportunity for public comment, also referred to at times as comments from the floor, and that's because we have no public hearings. We ask that you keep comments to three minutes, but when one speaker is representing multiple people, we increase that to five minutes. Out of respect for others wishing to comment, please remain mindful of the time limits when you move to the podium. For the records, please speak directly into the microphone, including your name and address. All comments must be addressed only to the commissioners and not to the petitioner nor members of the audience. On behalf of the commissioners, we appreciate your participation as we serve the community. So, next item on the agenda is item four, approval of minutes. Do we have any comments regarding changes?
I did get your email.
Oh, there's, was a small typo, an extra space on page two, so that's, that would be an amendment, as well as toward the top of page three, Taft Road is misspelled.
Any other revisions? This is just an affirmation for approval of the minutes? Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I thought we usually do a motion in a second.
A motion, okay.
Well, you need a motion in a second, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept this amendment. Second, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cant, second by Commissioner Barnett. Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Vincent, Jay Vincent?
Jay Vincent is not here.
Oh, Agelstein?
David Vincent.
Yeah, Agelstein.
Yes.
Voice.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Blaylock.
Yes.
Barnett.
Yes.
Cant.
Yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment.
We have number five.
I'm sorry?
Number five.
We have to approve the agenda.
Okay, the, oh, okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as far as that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda from Commissioner Voice, and seconded from Commissioner Cant. Dana, would you call the roll?
This has been all in favor.
Yeah.
All in favor. Hi. Okay, for those that are listening in, I am the...
Vice Chair.
Yeah, Vice Chair, and this is the first time that I've been in the hot seat, so please bear with me. So, we'll get through it. Okay, next, item six on the agenda is opportunity for public comments. This would be an opportunity for those in attendance to speak regarding topics of their interest that normally would, we would state that are not on the agendas, but since we have no public hearings, that's kind of a moot point. So, this is an opportunity for anyone to come to the microphone and basically state any concerns they have over a three-minute time limit. Do we have any citizens interested? Hearing none. Basically, I mean, there's not a motion to open the public comment.
No, you just...
Just to close it, it just, it's basically the public comment, period. Hearing no comments, the opportunity for public comment is over. Okay? Item seven, public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have a, item eight, we have a site plan review for Rosemary Estates. And at this time, I would like to have our professional Giffords Webster consultant, Joe Tangeri, comment regarding his memo and also allude to the Giffords Webster Engineering Report.
Thank you. So, this is a preliminary site condominium review. Site condominium review goes in a couple of phases. There's a preliminary approval, which is basically, is the layout okay? And there is an engineering review, and then it comes back for final approval, which is a Planning Commission recommendation to the board, and the board has the final. So, we are at the preliminary stage here, looking at a site off of Gould Road between 34 mile and 35 mile. Gould itself is mostly lined by single-family homes. They're on individual lots. This has an outlet to Gould, but then it's kind of behind all those homes. And it's 1401, 221034, because it doesn't have an address, so that's the parcel ID. They're proposing a 29-lot subdivision, and there are 72 total acres here. Each lot would have its own well and septic. It's proposed as a site condo. The lots range in size from .926 acres to 1.442 acres. That's the correct numbers, the ones down in the table. I don't know what happened there, but I have the wrong number in the table for the lot size. At any rate, they meet the minimum lot size that's required in the district. All lots front on two, two proposed private roads called Peppercorn and Sage. The site has a handful of wetlands. Those have been left outside the boundaries of the residential lots and establishes general common elements. The site is vacant, and there is, of course, those wetlands. It's listed on Eagle's Ride Map as contaminated due to the past presence of a Macomb County Road Commission landfill in the area. I've got some additional notes on that that I'll get into later, once I get through all the zoning stuff. Site is zoned R1A. All the surrounding properties are also zoned R1A and are either vacant or single-family homes. R1A District requires a minimum lot size of 1, 40,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 125 feet, and all the lots meet those minimums. They have, we have a front setback of 60 feet, rear setbacks of 50 feet, and side setbacks of 15 there. There is a typical lot diagram that shows 10-foot side setbacks, that has to be relabeled with the 15. The building envelopes are shown within the lots reflect the 15, but they'll just have to update the labeling on that one typical lot diagram. The wetlands won't be impacted by destruction. They have also shown a 25-foot buffer from the wetlands on the plans. Site condos have to comply with the Design Standards Ordinance 135, which is our subdivision regulation ordinance, and our land development ordinance, which is 186, and engineering, which is 187. We've pulled out a few of the standards that we can review from a planning perspective there. Sidewalks are required, or you can pay into a fund if you're not planning to construct them, as there are no sidewalks to connect to, they wouldn't be planning to instruct sidewalks here, they'd be paying into the fund instead. They have to show a 60-foot road right-of-way, and they are showing that. And then the cul-de-sacs are also compliant, most of those as well, 60-foot radius, or 100-foot radius, sorry. Ordinance 135 subdivision standards limits the length of a cul-de-sac street to 600 feet. Zoning ordinance limits private road cul-de-sacs to one mile in length. It's about 911 feet from Gould Road to the intersection of Peppercorn and Sage, and then there's three cul-de-sacs, and each one would have a length of about 1,700, 1,800, and 1,900 feet respectively. The Planning Commission can waive the, limit the subdivision ordinance. These are private roads, which are allowed to be one mile long for the zoning ordinance, so that 600 feet is a weavable standard. Street trees will be required in a quantity of not less than one per lot, not less than every 50 feet, so that'll have to be addressed at final approval. We always note it up front, though. They provided the required information for the preliminary approval. And then, to the issue of contamination in Eagle's Ride Map, so the applicant's environmental consultant has provided a report that states that based on the information reviewed, G2, that's the environmental consultant, proves that the subject property is not known to be a site of contamination. The identification of the site on the Eagle Ride Map, Ride Application, is an error due to archival data input. Put succinctly, this property used to be part of a larger property, which is located east, and that appears to be where the Road Commission landfill actually occurred. This property was split off from that. So, that seems to be part of the reason that this is labeled on Eagle's Ride Map system. The applicant, of course, is responsible for fully identifying, investigating, and if necessarily, you know, remediating any contamination there, or showing that they can proceed because there's not contamination. So, you know, our review doesn't warrant that there's no contamination on the site, put it that way. This review, in particular, evaluates the plan relative to the zoning and subdivision regulations of Bruce Township's ordinance. It's not a review of the environmental status of the site. We're not making any representations about the ability to develop the site with respect to its environmental status. I'm sure the applicant's gonna have something to say about this, too. You know, redevelopment could potentially require redesign or reconfiguration based on direction from Eagle, Macomb County Health Department, or other local agencies. You know, we understand the conclusion of G2's review, recommend that the township require some written confirmation from Eagle or another agency having jurisdiction that no contamination is present at the subject site and is not migrating onto the subject site. Some testing of the site itself is warranted, I think, too. I know that there's been some talk about testing wells, that the two wells are closest to the area that's actually in red on Eagle's application. I would also recommend some borings, surface level scraping, so test the wells, you're going deeper than what's going to be graded, but also want to make sure you're testing the surface so that turning over dirt, soil. So, generally, we find this to be a compliant plan, there's just that sort of outstanding Eagle issue here, and of course, I'm gonna let the applicant's do that as well. Do you have any questions?
Is there any documentation as far as what was dumped on that site?
There's, there's a lot of documentation. There's hundreds of pages of documents on Gould Ride Application. A lot of it is correspondence. It seems to be things like mostly road millings and things that were removed to construct roads, so there's probably a lot of dirt, trees, and things. But there is an area that's of the neighboring parcel that this used to be a part of that's actually got some iconography showing that there's a contaminated area on it. This, this particular property doesn't seem to have ever been marked that way, but I know that they've been emailing back and forth with Gould, and ultimately, we need to have something in the township records that shows that Eagle is, is not saying that this camp fell off. Then again, we think testing, prudent, to make sure...
Are you saying that we do have some paperwork saying something's been dumped on this site or this parcel?
It seems to be, it seems to be the neighboring site where there's confirmation of contamination.
Yes, so as it stands now, there's really, there's no, there's no documentation on this particular site.
No, we don't have anything that says there's definitely contamination on this.
So, we're just assuming that maybe some bleed over, okay.
Well, yeah, Joe, suppose, you know, the Eagle comes in and does what they're gonna do, and there's some, you know, well, well testing. If there was an issue, just say on the perimeter, some stuff like that, I mean, you can't build...
Yeah, you would, you would not be building in a contaminated area.
Right, so in that case, lots would have to be eliminated, or potentially the whole site reconfigured?
Yeah, if lots had been drawn in an area that was found, uh, wise, it would have... They've got some fairly large areas of land that are not in within lots on this plan, including the area that's closest to other sites. So, the hope would be that it won't come to that. You have to do some investigation, so...
So, the area that is maybe in question, is that the property to the east?
To the east, yeah.
That is behind Nordman and Judge's Court?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I had looked at property, and this goes back probably 40 years, I had looked at property along there, so I was familiar with the dumping at that time.
Sure.
And these other properties on Judges and Nordman are certainly much closer than this, you know, I can't imagine if they're not having a problem that this property would have.
Isn't it directly to the east, though?
This is to the east, yeah. But this is Judge's Court to the north, and this is Nordman.
Right, so if it was in here, right, what I'd be worried about is over there.
It is true that there's residential development in close proximity to the site.
Well, they would have had a, well, they were complete separate.
Yeah.
Wonder if there was any on, people like that.
I couldn't tell you if there was any history on that, yeah, I don't, it was done at the time.
Joe, I have a question about 6C. So, am I correct in, so, they meet the zoning ordinance limits for a private road, but not the standards for subdivision?
Not the sub, the standards in the subdivision ordinance limited 600 feet.
Right.
Those, that can be waived by the Planning Commission if they find that there's a reason to waive it. But, yeah, they meet the standard in the zoning ordinance, but not some, I don't know why the standards are different necessarily, but they, they meet one and not the other, but the one that they don't meet.
And the Planning Commission can do that with 135?
That's the Planning Commission, yeah.
The fire chief would need to sign off on the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I mean, the fire chief's gonna need to sign off on the overall design as well, so...
Yeah, he already, he already, if you have...
Yeah, I saw that, that he isn't planning on waiting until final site plan approval.
Right.
Any other questions for Joe?
Can you speak to the engineer's memo as well?
To the best of my ability, and obviously, not an engineer, so I...
The Eagle portion, he pretty much concurs with what your position is.
Exactly, we're on the same page there. We, we really just want to make sure that everybody's got their bases covered, that they don't have a problem in the future after developing it, that the township doesn't have a problem in the future after it's developed, et cetera. It's making sure that things are okay, really the, the point of all of this.
This memo seems pretty much straightforward. I just had a question about two provisions.
Sure.
Actually having to do with the site plan. What does number three mean?
I don't believe the township attorney has submitted any comments, but I think reviewing engineer was basically saying if the township attorney has submitted any comments...
Okay, I wasn't clear on that.
We're not trying to talk for them, or letting them speak for themselves.
And then, and number nine, a note should be added to the plan regarding presence or absence of floodplains and wetlands. Please note that a minimum 25-foot setback is required from any federally or state-regulated wetlands. Is that met?
We do have wetlands shown on, I don't know that there's any floodplain shown, there may not be a floodplain on the site, but...
I see the plan does have the wetlands.
It does show the wetlands, yeah.
My question is, is, has the minimum 25-foot setback from any of those been met?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Yes, okay.
It's, it's shown on there.
And also the engineer on item seventy alludes to, uh, plans do not contain existing or proposed utility information nor grading information.
Yeah, that gets reviewed in detail at engineering review. Um, so, I mean, given that this is, is gonna be, um, uh, well and septic, that's all gonna be contained within each lot, um, and then of course, retention would require the installation of utility pipe catch basins and things, so.
So basically, the purpose of including it this early is just providing to the applicant the earliest possible notification that it's going to be an upcoming requirement that they're likely already aware of.
Right.
Requirement for engineering review.
Exactly.
Okay.
I have a.
You go ahead, I'm done.
It's not really not listed on the review, and I don't know if this question you published. Why are there two dimensions?
Uh, I don't know why they split it up. It, it could just be that in order to get the volume that they needed with photography that they were working with, it made more sense to split it up.
I see Mike nodding his head.
Bridge. Water in this. Any other questions for Joe? The hearing done, like to invite the applicant and his representative up to the podiums. Please state your name.
Mr. Vice Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for hearing us. Excuse me, my name is John Eady, I'm the attorney for S H D Properties, who is the developer of this property. And to my left is Michael DeMille, he is the sole member of S H D Properties, the developer of the property. We also have Christina Vandenberg from his office, who's working on sort of administrative issues on, on this project. Excuse me. Again, we thank you for your time tonight. Uh, Mr. Tangeri did an excellent job explaining sort of the, um, the development and sort of the broad strokes of what the development is gonna look like. That's what we sort of address at this point. Once we have engineering review with the township, more specific items will be addressed, including grading plans and, and, um, so then those sort of issues. And then with final site plan review, that will come before you as a full package, so. Um, just to address the contamination issue, I think Mr. Tangeri did a nice job of explaining, um, what it is. It is a Macomb County Department of Roads dump from thirty years ago. Uh, the Macomb County split this parcel off from the, from the dump, and that is the eastern boundary, excuse me, that you see on the site plan, and then sold the part, this parcel separate from the dump to, in a public auction, where Mr. DeMille bought that and has held the property for some thirty years. Excuse me. He has in the past, um, drilled wells close to that boundary line with Macomb County Department of Health.
Sure.
Uh, uh, approval, and, and they've come back clean, but we understand that, you know, when you see contamination, we see things pop up on the Eagle website, red flags pop up and sirens start going, so we wanna make sure that everybody is comfortable going forward with this. So, we have the G2 report, we'll be following their recommendation, we'll be doing, Macomb County Department of Health requires, we're gonna work with Eagle to get this removed from their site, but working with Eagle can be a challenge sometimes. They're on their own, um, on their own timeline, but we are working with them, we are in the process of also getting Macomb County Department, who was it, is that Department of Health? Is it Department of Health who has the records?
Yeah, the sanitarian.
So they have a, they have a, a cache of records from the time that this was determined to be hazardous spot, and when they determined, uh, made the determination to sell, this parcel suffered from the other. We're in the pres, process of getting those records, be able to review and to provide them to the township as well, so, um, we should have a good idea of where things were dumped, what was dumped at that time, so.
We, we did receive from Eagle, um, the document that stated that, just what John had mentioned, the dump area facing Van Dyke, and that was notated in a red line, and the property that we own to the west of that was notated in green, and their comment that that was the green area, not contaminated, and Mr. Christina was the one that corresponding with them to get that information, so, um.
So the, at the time of engineering, we expect to have a package to be able to present to the township, hopefully to allay any concerns that you may have, so.
Right, my first step was, as Gary was saying, the two lots closest, we wanted to put wells and the, um, geological study that we must do in order to get approval, to prove that there's enough water to support life, um, but not just that, they have to also be tested to make sure the water is potable and that it's good for drinking. So, the thought process was, we wanted to put two wells and they pump them for, I think it's ten or twelve hours straight, so to test not only several things, but drawdown to make sure that there's enough water after you've got twenty-nine people sucking water that it's not gonna leak. Second thing was, they take samples and they send those in for the various tests to make sure it's potable, so, um, in addition, we plan on doing, um, what Joe had mentioned, um, that we had talked about, we want to, in an abundance of caution, because I, as you, don't want any issues.
Yeah.
So, we want to drill and lease the first two lots, if we find anything, we would go to the next, to the next, to the next, until we don't find anything, but.
That's twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, the most easterly lots that we would have towards the contaminated area. Um, so that was the plan. Um, so yes, that's, that's what we were attempting to convey.
Joe, I have a question. I don't know who's gonna answer it. they can do their test wells at any point for us. They don't need an approved preliminary site to proceed with that testing?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, they've got the property, they can do, they can test it whenever.
We, we can show you past results of a well that I dug, and I was planning on putting a personal house here, um, where the retention pond is roughly, uh, the one that's tucked up by that particular land. I had drilled a well right there, and that information is at the sanitarians proving that that water's potable and stuff at that time. I'm not saying maybe it's changed today, and that's why we're testing today, but we do plan on drilling those. We want to do in point of order, we wanted hopefully to get approval today to allow us then to go get, um, our engineer to stake, then to allow us to get permits, to get the wells drilled, and then to, you know, so that's a progression.
You don't need a preliminary site plan to.
Yeah, it's a, it's a progression, so if, if you say yes, that we can at least go to the next step, then our next step is to get engineers, um, which would be urban land, you guys met, um, so, well, at least some of you probably did for sure. Um, so we would go ahead and put pins in so that the well driller would know where to go, and then we would get permit in order to do so and go about our business.
Where I'm going with this is, is the only next step I believe that we can do as a group is give a preliminary site plan.
That, that's correct, tonight, yes.
Right, that's all we can do.
Yeah.
And our, at this point, our engineers and our planner are, are telling us, no, don't do that, get the Eagle, uh, um, certification in hand before we move down that line, because if for some reason it doesn't, you know, prove out, and we know you're gonna still develop it, but you'll have to reorganize what you're doing.
Well.
Am I stating that correctly, Joe?
Uh, yeah, I mean, more or less. I think we're a little less concerned than we were initially, because initially it was like, whoa, okay, we've got this contaminated property here, um, how's that gonna go? But the, the more and more of the correspondence that's gone along seems to be pointing to this portion actually isn't where the contamination is, so I think we're, we're, we're not as concerned as we were when this first came in. We, we want the due diligence done, obviously, but we're not like.
Well, the issue is, is we haven't seen any of the correspondence.
Sure, I, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
We've seen nothing other than, it's, it's an important factor, what the G2 company said.
Ms. Poise, if I may, and I think that's an important consideration for this panel and for the board of trustees, but, um, I think that's more of a final site plan approval after engineering, present a full, full package of this is what we're going to build, this is where we're gonna put wells. This is, this step here today is, this plan complies with the ordinances, it looks like it can be built within city ordinance, or township, excuse me, township ordinances, they can go to the next step and start hiring professionals to start doing this work, because without this approval, we're sort of, Mr. DeMille would be sort of reticent to start paying a lot of money, not knowing that he can actually build this project. Um, so that's, I think that's, that's what we're asking for today, is a preliminary approval that this project as a concept works. And then these, we have these concerns, and you, you bring these concerns to us, and we obviously know them, the planner's brought them to us, and, and they'll be brought up over and over again until they're completely allayed, but those would be addressed during the engineering process, and when we come back to you with final site plan approval request, that at that time, you will have a stack of documents, you will have, you have enough to make you comfortable that, that we're able to use that ground near the eastern border of that, this property.
So what's our timeframe again for, if we have the preliminary site plan approval? Isn't there, isn't it two years?
I believe it is two years, I won't verify that.
Reason I'm asking is because I have personal experience working with Eagle.
Yeah, yep.
For a regulated well, a single well that had to be replaced, and it took fourteen months.
Yeah.
They are on their own timeline, there's no rushing them or anything.
And I will, I will tell you, they, so it's different than what you're dealing with, but you can see how it works.
Sure.
Is that this was a single small well that served, one of two that served a very small community. It was unbelievable, the, the rigors that we had to go through the full born permitting process, um, two rounds of testing, and it actually, I think it's a twenty-four hour runtime.
Twenty-four, wow.
Yeah, and I would, I'd never make any sort of representation in dealing with Eagle, and this is what's going to happen, but this, we believe is more of an administrative issue than it is a testing issue. Um, it should have been removed when the property was separated back thirty years ago and it just wasn't. Um, but we will do all the testing, we're not saying that we're not going to, but the Eagle portion of it is getting them to remove it from their website, I think, is hopefully a different path, and hopefully we can get there quicker, but, you know, right?
Yeah, the timeframe and the ordinance is that, uh, from the time of preliminary approval, they have one year to begin the, uh, engineering review process. Uh, they've, I think we'll probably go straight into the engineering review process, really, and then from the time of receiving engineering approval, they have six months to come back in front of you to get their final approval.
They, I, for instance, could engineering give approval with, without this last Eagle thing nailed down?
They wouldn't, I, they, they, there's, no, they wouldn't. It will not happen. Cause they have to know that, that, that you can actually do all this at that point, and the wells and the septic and the grading, and that's all gonna be reviewed during engineer, engineering review, so they're definitely going to, um, withhold engineering approval until they've got sufficient, um, satisfaction that.
As long as they start within a year.
Yeah, as long as there's an engineering review within a year.
Question, let's say that this is approved for preliminary site plan, uh, as well as final site plan, gets kicked over to engineering, and then around that time, Eagle weighs in and says there's a cross-contamination issue that would potentially require a reconfiguration of the current layout. So how's that play out?
Well, Eagle's gonna be weighing in before they get the final approval. Either, either there's an administrative error that needs to be corrected, and Eagle will correct it, and they'll provide the evidence that Eagle has corrected that administrative error prior to getting engineering approval, or it'll turn out that there wasn't an administrative error and there needs to be some other process that occurs. They're going to do the testing, so we'll have the results of that as well, uh, prior to engineering review, engineering approval being granted.
That's a given, there's no.
Yeah, when it comes back to you for final, it's been through engineering, they're okay with it.
Okay.
Our final is a recommendation to count to the board, board grants final, and then they go into pre-construction meetings.
Okay, so I had it out of order.
Yeah, yeah, we would not be granting final approval prior to engineering.
So the, uh, site plan approval for tonight has nothing to do with Eagle whatsoever. Uh, it's basically the plans that they've given us all within, uh, our ordinances and what we need for that particular piece of property. Uh, the Eagle approval would be on the next step, so we don't need to worry about that, or is that something we would put in the motion?
I think you would put it in the motion. I think you would say that they have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the township and its reviewing, um, uh, agencies, which near, uh, the health department and whoever else needs to be involved, um, that the site is potable and, um, is, and construction is not prohibited by. If they can show that, then they're off to the races.
Yeah. And it's unlikely, contaminated sites can be remediated as well, um, but I hope it's unlikely on this site, but that's.
Yeah, and remediation can be a costly and time-consuming process, so hopefully it doesn't come to that, but it can be done.
Yeah.
Um, it might require trucking a lot of dirt out, maybe even bringing in new dirt, depending on how much you have to truck out, but, um, yeah, remediation can be done. It comes down to it.
I always like to try and err towards a side of caution. So it reduces the opportunity at the very least for something to, to come back and blow up in our face if we were too permissive.
Well, just so you guys know, and I think you mentioned it upfront, but these houses that face school road, that's, was part of this parcel, so if.
Understood, you got, you know, existing.
Yeah, if it was, it should have been caught, maybe that there was something at that time from the sanitarian, because they actually do the approval of life-giving water and, and need for circulation for sewage and stuff like that, so that would have been something that would have been flagged, I think, almost immediately on those lots front, and, um, it wasn't. But I do realize, and I understand, that's why I drilled my well right back here, as close as I could get to the problem area, to make sure that I didn't have anything, and I could get those results as well, but that's neither here nor there, that's twenty-five years ago when I bought it, so we'll, our plan was to do the right thing and go systematically, make sure, and an abundance of caution, because I live here too.
Yeah, appreciate that.
If, even without the, this hazardous materials in the jointing site, these wells would have to be driven, drilled, these tests would have to be done, uh, the health, health department would have to review them and approve it anyways, part of the engineering process, so this is just, it's an extra step, it's an extra consideration, and it's an important consideration, and one not to sort of take lightly, but it, it, it's simply part of, of the development process, and if it comes back and these areas are more contaminated than we think, and has to be drawn, we can, we can file an amended site plan and just keep this process going rather than starting from zero as well.
Okay. Question for Joe, do you know whether the Macomb County Health, um, call it well suitability, more centers on bacterial versus, uh, chemical contaminants, that Eagle would be more of a specialist in assessing?
I, I don't really know exactly what, what the health department looks at or what they, uh, what kind of, as they.
But for sure, Eagle, they look at that stuff, the chemical aspect, correct?
Yeah, I mean, Eagle definitely, they're the ones who mean things like ride map, so.
But the county's responsible for the potable water of their citizens, so they would be, you know, any sort of contaminants, they would wanna flag. I'm not, I don't. I'm not, I don't know the standards off the top of my head, so I'm not going to say I do. But, but they're responsible for making sure that the sites have potable water or time immemorial.
I believe that in the initial sighting, county has to follow guidelines.
I would think you're right.
Where it's different from what I experienced dealing with a regulated well is we get to test our chemicals every year. PFAS and, which I'm actually kind of happy about, but it's quite expensive. And, you know, we, we do.
So both Eagle and the county weighs in on yours or is it just?
No, just, just Eagle.
Just Eagle?
Right. But I'm saying in the initial well digging process, I, my belief is, is that the county follows Eagle's guidance.
And Mr. Higlestein, I will, I have done a couple of condo developments in Bruce Township with well and septic. And Macomb County Health Department requires language in the master deed that certain, certain levels be maintained that, that, that comports to their requirements and, and that if there's any problems, that you have to go back through health department approvals and things like that. That's part of the master deed and this will be developed with a master deed. So it will be part of, part of the development. And they require an approval of, of the master deed before it's filed, the health department does.
As the attorney will go review that, make sure that everything's legally in that document is out there. That was some of the language that came up earlier about attorney. I think that's where that'll come in.
Yeah, the attorney will review the master deed.
Do the commissioners have any further questions for the applicant as representative?
Can I address one more issue before you, before you address the file? The, the road, private road length and the cul-de-sacs, they do not meet the township's requirements. They do meet Macomb County Road Commission's requirements. Township also requires private roads meet Macomb County Township requirements. So they do do that. This board may waive those requirements in terms of the cul-de-sac not having, I believe it's a hundred foot radius. It has a 60 foot radius and the lengths are a little longer than required under the subdivision ordinance. My client here has developed another subdivision in this township called Pond Creek Estates. It has almost the exact layout, has the exact same issues. This board waived them. There's no real issues with terms of length of the road or the turnaround radius. Fire department approved it. There was no problems with that. So we'd ask if you are considering approving this tonight and we'd ask that you waive those two requirements as well.
Just to let you know, if you don't know where it is, it's right on Old Van Dyke just before you get onto 53 Pond Creek.
Yeah, I've driven through it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a nice development.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, Joe. If the commission wanted to entertain a motion for preliminary site plan approval. I'm just going through your memo. It looks like the issue with regard to the side setbacks was just a typo. So we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think it should be amended on the plan, but it doesn't seem to be an actual problem with the physical layout of the site.
We would want to note payment into the sidewalk fund. We would, do we have to make a separate motion to waive the limit? The limit required by the subdivision standard?
It would be included in your motion.
We would note that street trees have to be addressed as part of the final. We would note that written certification from Eagle with regard to any contamination issue must be received by the time of final.
Yeah. I mean, I, I've been thinking about how to rule a condition regarding that. I think what you're really looking for is resolution of the question of contamination to the satisfaction of all reviewing authorities. And, you know, the health department is probably going to come to that conclusion based on its processes. The engineer will come to that conclusion based on input from the health department and some correspondence from Eagle. Ultimately, if it's a, if it turns out to be an administrative thing, then Eagle would change the designation and they would get some correspondence to that effect. So kind of the engineer and I will ultimately kind of be looking at things in the aggregate, but individual other agencies or reviewers will have their own criteria.
So language to the effect that can the contamination issue be resolved to the satisfaction of all reviewing authorities to do it?
I, I think that would, I think that covers it.
And then I think we'd want to say in general, all of the other issues are points addressed in the engineer's review.
Yeah.
Could you include anything on motion about the fire chief?
I mean, he's got to sign off on it regardless.
Kind of a moot point?
Yeah. Yeah. So ultimately, yeah, his approval needs to be conveyed no matter what.
Yeah, he gets through engineering, he'll, he'll get his.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
During, during the engineering process, he has to sign off and.
Okay, thank you.
Is part of that.
There'll be a utility plan drawn up, a grading plan drawn up. It'll be, you know, eight, 10 pages of, of plans that you'll be submitting.
Different phases of construction will be laid out and with that, all the bodies will be able to critique their specific issue, which would be the fire chief and different things. So public, public works.
Yeah. It's just ultimately they've got some work to do to resolve those outstanding issues and.
Any, any remaining questions for the applicant or his representative? If not, I'd like to ask them to have a seat and turn over discussion between the commissioners.
Thank you once again for your time tonight.
Sure. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mike.
You're being awfully quiet.
Not much to say.
Not much to say.
Any thoughts? Now's an opportunity to speak your mind. Hearing no commissioner comments. Do we have anyone interested in submitting a motion? You've been taking great notes, Amber.
Look for help. I will try.
We'll gladly attempt to help you.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary site condominium plan for parcel ID number 14-01-22-100-034, which is on the east side of Gould Road between 34 and 35 Mile Road. And the applicant is Mike Demille or is it the name of your company?
It's SHD Properties LLC.
The, the motion for preliminary approval is contingent upon the following. That the site plan document be updated to correct the labels for the side setback showing that it is 15 feet. That the applicant will pay into the sidewalk fund in lieu of sidewalks. That the, and this is where I'm going to need help, Joe. That the, the planning commission will waive the limit in the setback in the subdivision standards that limits the cul-de-sacs, the street length to 600 feet.
Yes, that's, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. That the street tree, street trees will be presented at the point of final site plan and will comply with our regulations. And with regard to the potential site contamination, that the resolution of questions regarding the contamination will be resolved to the satisfaction of all the reviewing authorities. And that all of the points in the engineer's memo with regard to the site plan will be addressed at the point of final site plan approval.
Just like to emphasize one point regarding the Eagle requirement, that that be in the form of written confirmation. Second? We have a motion from Voice and a second from Commissioner David Vincent. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Barnett?
Yes.
Leilak?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Higlestein?
Yes.
Voice?
I can hardly hear you. Yes.
Voice, sorry.
Yes.
Far away from me. Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations.
But there was only one thing there, Joe.
Quite a hundred fifty foot and all the other cul-de-sacs.
Well, that's a good point. I did not say that, Joe. Do I need to amend the ordinance or that ordinance?
Make another motion.
Or do I make a second?
Yeah, well, you, you, did I miss that you had a final vote on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was just making notes.
Can we make a, a second motion just waiving the hundred foot cul-de-sac requirement on that site?
Hundred foot radius.
Right. You, I guess that could be like an.
Labeled as a, a, a motion amendment? Well, if you amend the motion, then you have to re-vote on the whole. And the person that seconds it has to allow it.
Yeah, which I, I don't think will be an issue. I, I would just do that. I would, I would just amend the motion and re-vote.
To include the waiver of the hundred foot radius that's required in the subdivision ordinance for the cul-de-sacs.
I support that as well.
Should we put two 60 feet so it can't be changed from that number?
Yeah, I would just be specific.
We got it?
Also need to say that we're changing it from a hundred foot down to 60.
Okay. So we have a motion amendment from Commissioner Voice. We have a second from Commissioner David Vincent. Okay. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Yeah, is that how? Voice?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Higlestein?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Leilak?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. So moving on to agenda item nine, communications. Do we have any communications? Hearing none. Moving on to agenda item 10, unfinished business. 10A is master plan discussion. So Joe, you have a, a new memo?
Yeah. So there's a couple of things happening here. We'll start with the memo. So I created a map showing the changes that we discussed last time for confirmation. Just so that we can look at that and say, yes, those are all the changes we agreed on. And then I also just passed out before the meeting, this sheet that shows all the new acreage totals based on what we changed. So I think we should probably start the discussion with the map and just confirm that yes, this is what we discussed as everybody understood it. And I have one or two notes on this too. There's one parcel at the north end of this rectangular area of industrial zoning that is actually already zoned industrial. For some reason, the last future land use map did not have it planned as industrial, even though it's already zoned that way. So that is going to be pulled into the industrial land area.
In other words, it'll be gray.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Rather than the expansion area.
That was the 12 point something acre lot zone on that list of all the properties.
Yeah.
It was, the owner is I think Mrs. Thorman or Ms. Thorman. And it's the one where there's that kind of house-like that's sitting at the, toward Van Dyke. And there's usually a bunch of cars and stuff parked out there.
Which parcel is this, Amber? Is this Ebling and Van Dyke?
Uh, it's south of Ebling.
South.
Yeah.
It's, it's the dotted one, the big car stinger?
Yeah, but it's the.
It's actually south of 35 mile.
See where this line is?
Yep.
That line where this part should be gray. It's already industrial.
Okay.
And the dotted part would be the farm, Van Hootie Farm, northern from market.
Okay.
So that, was it about 85 acres, something like that? That's a big piece of property.
The, the farm portion is 80 acres. The other portion that's already zoned industrial is, is more like 40.
Forty, is it?
Yeah.
Well, that property's owned by Van Hootie, correct? But the, the market's on the other side of the street.
No, you're talking about the property south of it, the, like that open field.
Right, on the east side.
Yeah, it's got that little white house out front, like little home house.
Yeah. It's a decent sized property when you take, you account its whole depth. Yeah.
And the, the Van Hooties is.
It's 80. It's, it's double that. Yeah.
So my line should probably be a little bit further up.
Yeah. It just has to coincide with the parcel boundary.
So that would be cleaned up by the time we were to present anything?
Yeah. So this is for confirmation. And then what we'll do, if you confirm it tonight, is we'll actually update the map and show you what the map will look like in the new plan update.
I have a, a question for the commissioners. All the way north for the lavender farm property. I know we had a lot of discussion about this last time and I think we had talked about if we were going to change anything on the future land map, that it would only potentially be a portion of the property, not the entire parcel. I don't know if we had made any decisions on that one way or another, but I think that's where we should.
So broadly, we landed on the whole parcel, but there was a lot of discussion about whether or not to only do a portion of it. And if you want to discuss that tonight, of course you can. If, if there's an adjustment that needs to be made here, we'll make it. I'll note that there's a little point that sticks down south of the Henry Ford that's actually a separate owner that shouldn't be included in my little outline. But I just drew the line straight instead of cutting off that little tip. But yeah, that is of course something you can discuss. But at the, as of the last meeting, the full parcel was what was assigned as, as office. And, and there was discussion of whether it should be partial or full.
I really spent a lot of time thinking about this and went back and watched the meeting. And we did in fact wind up with the whole thing like Joe said. meeting, and we did, in fact, wind up with the whole thing like Joe said. I mean, technically, we haven't made any recommendations at all. All we're talking about is what we're going to present at the open house. So, after that is when we make recommendations. But we did talk about the whole thing, which is 18 acres almost. And I've re-watched it, and I'm really no longer in support of doing the whole 17-point, whatever it is, as a future plan for office. And I actually wrote out the reasons why, just to make sure I captured them all. And I start with looking at the Henry Ford property, and we're basically in a position where we have to do something with that, and that's because of the 70-year-old hospital operation that creates the zoning ordinance altogether by about two decades. And while we know the absorption rate for office is overall nominal at best, it's clearly the best use for that building. I also note that the placement of that hospital building on the property, because it also cuts along the Van Dyke as it's curving, the building is quite far back on that property. So, when we look at that, there was really not an opportunity for us to carve out, like saying, oh, we'll do the front part office and the back part something else. We can't. The building's too far back there. That is totally not the case with the vacant lavender farm property. There's nothing on there at all. And that property, you know, I don't know which you want to call the front. The front is Boardman Road or the front is Van Dyke, but it's right there in the corner of both roads. And I went to Google Maps to measure from Van Dyke to the end of the property line. That's a quarter of an acre back, so it's quite far back.
Quarter of a mile or?
Quarter of a mile, thank you. Quarter of a mile back. So, and there, it actually does abut a Bruce Township house in there a long time. And there's four houses right across the street on the Boardman side that are all, you know, kind of in a row. So, the other thing that was sticking in my mind is I'm a little bit bothered by the fact that we've talked about future property designation for office for a specific property owner, so they could use it as a launchpad, so to speak, to request something of a commercial nature in the future. Joe didn't tell us we couldn't do that, but I don't know that we've ever done that at Bruce Township. So, that's also rolling around in my mind in terms of looking at, making the entire property future plan for office. I also looked at the existing master plan, and this is the plan that we have now that was back from when they did the rewrite in 2009 timeframe, and it's been affirmed four times now, I think.
This would date to 2016, this future land use map.
Yeah, I'm talking about the master plan itself.
Yeah, well, the plan document was also done in 2016.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And, Joe, the front page of the master plan shows that, I don't have it with me, shows that it was actually, it was the working document that we had from 2009.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was an update to that.
Yes, exactly. Point being is that the Elma Township plan for their side of Boardman Road, they've had that property about five in a row future designated as commercial for decades. This is not new. And actually, when you look back at the actual master plan language for the area around the old hospital, it absolutely speaks to this specifically. It says the township recognizes that a non-residential use will likely continue at this site, the site being the hospital. However, the master plan does not show this area planned for long-term non-residential use, nor does it promote the expansion of non-residential land uses in this area. So, I'm not saying that we can't recommend an adjustment to the master plan, but this has been specifically noted in the past that we're not looking for non-residential uses up there. Again, that is weighing on my mind in terms of saying, geez, if we're going to do anything, maybe we just should be looking at the front, the front five, six acres that are on the Van Dyke side. And then the last thing I wrote my notes about was if you think about an entire 17-acre parcel being designated as office or commercial, let's say the whole thing, listen to these examples. There's a 25,000-square-foot medical building, or well now, at roughly Rochester and Lincoln Road, Rochester Hills. That's on nine and a half acres. And one to two of the acres are wetlands, so nothing can be built there anyhow. The Orchard View Medical Building, which is on 30 Mile Road, just around the corner from where the Kroger deal is, that's on 5.5 acres. Now, if I look at comparables in terms of commercial elsewhere, not Bruce, actually one of them is, there's the shopping plaza at 25 Van Dyke where Vincent Jones is. That is 119,000-square-foot commercial plaza. It's on 17.8 acres. That's how much you get on 17 acres in terms of commercial. The shopping center where Kroger is at 30 Mile and Van Dyke, that's 92,000 square feet. It's on 15 acres. In Bruce Township, if you take all four buildings and Hiddler's Cove where Sheena's is, that's 126,000 square feet. That's only on 14.6. So, I guess my point when I'm looking at all of this and why I don't support any longer showing the whole 17 acres as office is because that was never envisioned. We may choose to change that, but why would we go to the extreme of setting something up that could end up with developments like, we don't, we don't, I don't think we need them. That's my personal opinion based on where we wound up. But even if one would argue, well, we should do a little bit more, why would we do 17 acres of either office or commercial? So, I've changed my thinking on doing the whole 17 acres.
I have to say, I have as well. And my preference is that whatever, I don't even know if they're correctly categorized as recommendations. I think this would, whatever this is, whatever potential change would be basically an option presented at Town Hall, right?
Yeah, Jared said it himself at one point during the meeting in November. I noticed when I went back and listened to it.
Which is, we're not committing to anything, but having it listed as an option, it kind of speaks to something in itself. But I'd like to make back big base decisions in the township, especially something as important as this. And, you know, even if nothing is done regarding change of that property to office, an opportunity still remains for a rezoning request. And I think the correct way to do that is garner support from the community that, hey, we want this type of development in that location. It's hard data versus just us thinking like, well, it may be a good idea. And based on what's currently available and based on the data that Henry just shared, that, you know, this could eventually allude to another commercial district of that area. And again, in the absence of available demand data, I'm not in support of it.
I, when I was doing my thing, I don't necessarily know that we all have to agree 100% on something, have it go for the, you know, what we're going to show at the Town Hall. I just know I can only speak my own mind. I'm not signing up for supporting the whole 17 acres as office. That's just me. I don't want to put my opinion on this. I have a strong opinion, obviously, and I'm sharing it, and you guys may or may not share that thinking. I'm not comfortable. And I do recognize that we have to do something, make a decision, so that we can move forward.
I also agree that I don't think I ever supported the full rezoning, but doing a portion along Van Dyke for the future land use map, so I don't even remember getting full support for doing it as whole, but I did re-watch the meeting.
You didn't what?
I didn't re-watch the meeting.
Actually, it was Randy who brought up the possibility of just doing the portion toward Van Dyke.
That's when we were talking about commercial, and then we decided to make the whole thing office instead, instead of making a part of it, rather than making that whole parcel I like the way it's configured now because it squares off that area, because if you leave a finger there of land that's going to be boxed in on two sides with office, who's going to develop that?
I'm not understanding.
If you cut that piece in half?
No, I would, I would.
Regardless, you're going to have a certain amount of frontage along Boardman that is going to stay agricultural, whatever it is.
Correct.
And then behind it is going to be office space.
No.
Because it's already part of the hospital.
No.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is that if you cut a little bit of Van Dyke off and make it commercial, then what's left over here is agricultural, but what's behind it is office, because that's where the hospital is behind this piece.
Right.
Off to the back of it.
That is, that is correct. However, it's a, it's very deep. I mean, across there, there's no building in your backyard.
We do have houses that back up to commercial right now, all along Sheena's behind there and.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they do buffers and.
I like all the things that you've said. I would have trouble trying to say, well, I think we should make five acres along Van Dyke commercial, or seven acres, or why would we randomly pick a number today because we have no idea ultimately what the future plans will be? So, for us to say a five-acre piece on Van Dyke is going to be commercial?
Well, we just did that exact same thing at 34 and Van Dyke with all those little properties around where.
Wasn't that Ebling?
No, it's where Peter's Glass.
Peter's Glass, yeah.
And one of those properties goes way, way back, and we said, no, only the part on Van Dyke, you know, X acres.
Well, we've taken away that office designation, though, because that was one of the areas that we were saying is not going to be office anymore, planned office anymore. Originally, it was a strip along, and it took parts of various properties, but that's not going to be on the map anymore as office.
I suppose, I get your point. I suppose one way to think about it is if, I'm making this up as I'm talking, it's 17-point-some acres now. Let's say we take something like the front five or six acres is office. I think that, and we do that, it goes through that way. Then, and the property gets sold, and in five years, somebody says, hey, we really want it to be commercial, not office, and they come forward with a plan and request a rezoning. At least there is a stake in the ground that the township was only looking at whatever the front parcel acreage is. If we said five acres and they came up with a plan that said, hey, we'll split it at seven or something like that, I think that is something that could be considered.
Question for Joe regarding commercial. Raz was in here a few months back regarding a, we reduced the minimum block size requirement for C2.
Correct.
Down to 1.3 acres. So, that being said, how many units can you put? Is that just one storefront on 1.3 acres, or can you put, like, you know, a mini strip on 1.3?
I mean, as long as you're meeting the other requirements of the ordinance, that's, you can put whatever you want in that 1.3 acres. If you can fit multiple units, then you do multiple units, and if you can fit only one thing, then you do only one thing. So, if you were doing something, you know, a standalone restaurant or something, you're probably not going to fit anything else on there with it. But a little retail center, you probably would have three or four units.
Well, yeah, probably four on the high side.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. I mean, if it's a Ruby Tuesday or something, it's probably standing on its own. But if it's, if it's a little speculative retail spaces, then you're going to get. Are there still Ruby Tuesdays to this?
I think so.
Another one in Farmington Hills closed, so I'm not sure.
I mean, the property owner was very forthright that he sees that property as commercial in the long run. That's his vision. He said that, whether he does it himself or he sells it and something goes in there. 17 acres of office is just, it's ridiculous. I mean, we're already, and I think Joe will see when we get to the numbers he prepared. I mean, we were trying to actually think about reducing office coming into this because there's no, you know, absorption rate on it. Putting 17 acres of commercial on there, that's a truck stop. That's what, not that anybody would want to, we would get a proposal to put a truck stop there, but that could fit on 17 acres. And I actually went and looked at GIS on two truck stops I passed on my way to the cottage. In fact, one of them's 17 acres and the other one is like 14. That's a lot of land.
A lot of traffic. A lot of traffic.
Yeah, I mean, the table document, it does show that even though a bunch of office was taken off the map, you actually wound up with a net amount of office.
And that was because of the Henry Ford property.
Yeah, exactly. Smaller parcels came off the map, bigger ones.
Going into the town halls, how would we address this as a talking point? How would it be referred to?
Well, I mean, I think it has to be pointed out as a point of interest in the township, considering X, X is either the whole thing or a portion, whichever we wind up deciding on present. And kind of have to lay out what's there now and what you're thinking about in the future.
We have to present just one thing?
No, certainly present alternatives.
But it could be like another designation on the map with a separate legend identifier?
I mean, potentially, in the long run, we would like that.
Undetermined potential consideration, something to that effect?
Yeah, I mean, you could say that considered for commercial or office that corner or something like that.
I just want to hear, you know, if there's support from the community for it.
I was really, in order to ultimately recommend something to me, I always start as with what exists now. And because I don't like to make decisions in a vacuum. And I said, okay, if if what we have now is totally wrong, then I need to be able to articulate why that is. If what we have now deserves to be updated based on current commercial needs that we think we have, then, okay. But when I'm looking at the existing master plan, it specifically speaks to that properties, the properties around Henry Ford. And it says, and nothing has changed with regard to the roads, the intersections, the size of the properties, the fact that on the Elmont side, that there are zone commercial up to Boardman Road, nothing has changed. So I need to be able to articulate the reason now why we would say that's a good spot for office, or that's a good spot for commercial that didn't exist. I mean, I, I have a hard time thinking it was just an oversight in the past, because it's, it's one of a few things that specifically pointed out, you know, like that one is. I wouldn't be, I'm very hesitant about this whole thing, but I, because this is just, we're presenting ideas on a piece of paper at this point. I wouldn't be adverse if we can do it, is going forward with the town hall and saying, look, this has been a proposal that's put forward, you know, we talked about it at length, you know, what does the community think? Do we do nothing with it at all and just leave it the way it was?
So we're honoring the property owner's request?
Of course. And it's a legitimate request. We could get their further input, you know, if some, if you're interested in doing something with it, you know, should it be the entire 17 acres? Should it just be the, you know, the frontage on Van Dyke, whatever that may be? That's enough.
It is, yeah.
I don't want to, I know we need to be, we want to make good decisions. And I don't want to hold it up any, but early in the discussion in November, Jared was a component of going right ahead and designating the whole 17 acres as commercial. And, you know, he and Andy and Daryl raised their hand in favor of that. So I, I mean, I don't want to make a decision and cut Jared out of discussion because he did feel so. So perhaps we wait till next month, or maybe we come up with the idea of presenting both and seeing what the community thinks.
I mean, I think at a minimum, that corner there, long term, some will have eventually. I don't know what the timeframe, long term, the prospect of that corner not coming something other than what it is now, seems like a remote possibility. Especially if something gets built across the street, across Boardman. You know, as we know, there is commercial zoning there. So I, I think that we definitely have to be considering that some, something eventually will likely happen.
You say the same thing about every other hard stop corner on Van Dyke?
I mean, most of the other hard stop corners on Van Dyke don't have commercial zoning across the street.
Yeah, see, that, I think one of the points that was big for me was that people are speaking the township, they're willing to drive somewhere to go get their amenities. But pushing these things to the outskirts, to me, made a lot of sense. Keep away from their houses and keeps their area more rural. If you know you're going to be building right across from commercial anyways, again, kind of keeps everything closer, keeps your area rural. That was my, my thinking on that. I don't think we ever mentioned I wouldn't be against splitting it. Like I said, your, your numbers are good as far as you're, what you're talking about the size, parcels. This is a huge parcel. I don't remember a discussion about splitting that and making it smaller, because I would not be against that. But I do like the commercial on that corner. I don't see residential housing on that corner to be a premium, a premium spot. So I would like to see commercial. Would it have to be 17 acres? Not necessarily. But I do like the idea of commercial being an area where other communities are already planning on their commercial, even though it's been decades in the works. I'm thinking one day it will be there. That is a very, very unique corner over there.
I mean, on the other hand, we're also ruling out that it's agricultural property. It could be continued to use as agricultural. I mean, it was, when you look back at the old historical maps on GIS, way back to the 50s and 60s, you can see the little furrow robes from the aerials where it was being farmed. I mean, the fur owner created a specialized farm there. So it's, you know, and I look at, we have the hard, the commercial at 36 and Van Dyke, the one where that old little kind of building is, that's six acres. Well, why wouldn't we put commercial right across the street on the other side of 36 Mile Road?
There used to be a produce stand there.
So, I mean, it's.
No, I'm saying on the north side.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that was rezoned.
I, what I, my point is, is that, and it's the same thing. Amanda, you may be more familiar where that little pocket is that is currently commercial. There at Ebling and Van Dyke. Yeah.
There was a park.
Yeah, I know. What's right across the street from that on, on Van Dyke, and right across the street from that on Ebling Road. I mean, you.
Across on Ebling is a house, I believe, the residential.
There was a computer business that was there as well, straight across from Ebling.
That's right.
From Ebling dead end, well, it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're taking the commercial distinction off of that.
Right. For the future, but we're leaving it commercial for the current zoning.
The current zoning won't change necessarily, but.
Right. So my point is, is that wherever you have a pocket, in fact, it was actually, I think it was Pete Snyder who was in here when they proposed that Royalton Pines across the street from Sheena's. And he actually said, the property owner considered coming in and asking for a rezoning to commercial, because it's right across the street. I mean, it's the same thinking. So we're always going to be subject to that.
I circle back to, I want to hear what the, if there's community support for any sort of rezoning in any form.
You mean, future plan? We're not talking about.
Okay.
Future plan.
Yeah, but, you know, the town halls, you know, what's the appetite for it?
I mean, honestly, Darryl, to your point, we could have the town halls, and there could be 100 people that say, that's a great idea, right? We don't know.
Yeah. So, and so be it.
At the same time, we're, we're actually put in this position to make the decision too. So we take as much feedback as we can get, but at the end, we're going to have to, people aren't going to agree. We're going to, we're going to have to take, take the best of what we have.
We just don't have the feedback yet.
We had a hard time getting feedback with our flyers even. We may have a hard time getting, getting a good consensus, but we'll work with what we have.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the deal is, is we got, what, 400 responses? But the deal is, is those are 400 people approximately that felt passionate about responding. And it's unfortunate that, for whatever reason, that we didn't get more. But, you know, that's pretty typical, isn't it, Joe?
400 was, but, you know, pretty amazing.
You go with, go with what you have, so.
So, so we can keep moving. Are we comfortable with presenting, you know, the two kind of considerations for that property, which would be, I think, office, either the whole 17 acres or office with front part, the front part office and the rear part, just leaving it as it?
I'd be okay with making that piece a little smaller. But again, so like the idea of office or commercial type space. Again, it's what we need in the community. If we're getting short on, on commercial, if we have to pick a spot, I think.
We're actually, maybe Joe was going to talk about this. We're actually not short on commercial. We're going to end up with.
About 31 acres of vacant commercial on the usual land use map anyway.
But that, you already, that doesn't include the vacant that we already have.
That's, that's where we'll net out too, is 31. So it'll be about the same as now. We just, we lost some in one place and there's more elsewhere.
Right.
Because of the area by 33 and McKay.
Right. Your remark was, is that's probably going to fill us up for a long, long time.
Yeah, the, the center that's going in at 33 and McKay is likely going to absorb a lot of the demand for commercial in this township for a long time. I don't know that there's going to be a pro forma that really works out very well for another large commercial development in the township for a long time. Because there's just not the critical mass to, to demand it. Specialty commercial might be a little bit of a different story, is a more of a draw. But just for normal, run-of-the-mill speculative retail spaces and, you know, little carryout restaurants and stuff, I think what's already been approved is probably going to hold the line for quite a while.
Right. And I was actually the one, this is going back to, oh, primary, maybe like June of 2024, when we, Mike Tremblay, it was before that, because Mike was still here. And he had kind of teed up the initial conversation that we had about we're getting close to, you know, a master plan review. And he, his feeling that he expressed was it was very important that we look at the industrial for two reasons. Number one is that over time, we lost a big chunk of industrial as a result of what happened on the, I call it the Raz property that had almost 100 acres. A lot of that got changed. And then the annexation. And it's important to have some industrial within the community because they are typically higher valued properties. So they bring in a nice revenue stream. And plus, they are very low usage in terms of services. That was his kind of feeling. And it was at probably the second meeting, I suggested, you know, if we're looking at industrial, let's look at commercial as well, because it's similar in the sense that commercial, you know, is a rev, this sounds like I'm out trying to grab money, but it is a revenue stream and they're low users. Commercial properties are, correct me if I'm wrong, their value is nowhere near the value of what the industrial property.
It's still high, but it's not as high as.
Not as high, right. And it just, it wasn't, the basis for my suggesting to add that on was not because we had lost a whole bunch of commercial through annexation or something like that. It was because, hey, they're kind of similar. We might as well include it if we're going to include this thing. I don't recall that in any of our conversations, anybody ever saying that they thought we didn't have enough commercial. I don't recall that. I don't know. Joe remembers, it was just, hey, let's do due diligence. So.
The other thing you have to think about commercial is that just because we deem it commercial, doesn't mean that anybody wants to ever be there. So if we tuck commercial here and there, and there's no traffic flow, there's no desire for anybody to put a commercial building there because they rely on foot traffic to get there. Whereas industrial, they have a purpose, that people go there to work, and people go there intentionally. Back when I rented an industrial building, the rent on an industrial building was half of what the commercial was, because industrial took up more of the footprint. So you can get more square footage of industrial because it required less parking. Whereas when you have a commercial piece of property, it requires more parking, so there, there's less building available on the site. So then the price for the rent has to be higher. So in order for someone to be able to afford to put their business in a commercial building, it's got to draw the business to make it worthwhile. And like I say, if we're going to tuck commercial here and there just because we want commercial, that doesn't mean that anybody's ever going to want to be there. So the parcel on 38 Boardman is an ideal spot for something like that because it's got the traffic that's going to go there, through there all the time. You know, we've got vacant commercial by Sheena's and that whole complex.
To the north of it.
Why? Because nobody wants to be there. So it doesn't matter what we zone commercial. If it's not a desirable location, it really doesn't matter if we've got vacant or not, if somebody's ever going to want to put their business there.
Yeah, I mean, standard commercial development, I sort of have to think about it as. Yeah, I mean, standard commercial development, I sort of have to think about it as you know, it's almost a little like a volcano. Pressure builds until someone sees the opportunity and says, alright, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of activity, it would make sense to put a business here as you get the pass-by traffic. It's a little different for something that's highly specialized, you got like a real geek type of business. That can be a draw on its own, you know, and I think cider mills and things like that around here are a good example of that kind. It's possible that this corner of Boardman and Van Dyke that we're talking about, possible that where we land on agribusiness
Exactly.
ultimately be the thing that happens there anyway.
Right. And I mean, there would be nothing stopping that right now.
Well, certainly nothing that's protected by, you know, right to farm.
Right. Having said that, we do have an existing provision in our current zoning ordinance that allows somebody to come in and ask for an SOU.
Yes, that's true.
I mean, our, our guardrails are not good. They're not as good as they could be, and that's something we're gonna be discussing, but suppose you're right.
Because ultimately, that kind of specialty thing, that wouldn't need to have that, you know, kind of pass-through type of scenario, the same way that standard commercial would.
Correct. And that wouldn't require any rezoning.
That's right.
Right. It's just a SOU.
Something that I don't believe we've talked about is for the most part, our existing commercial and industrial is within the sewer and water district.
A lot of it is, yeah. Obviously, the industrial up Van Dyke is not, but yeah, the bulk of, of the area is in this modern sewer district.
So, you know, up at Boardman, that would be a potential limiting factor. And I think north of there, I'm not sure to what degree, but I know that there's a four-inch sewer line coming from the former hospital that goes to the Elmont Township Waste Treatment Plant, so.
Yes, there is.
You know, I'm not sure who else connects into that along the north side of Boardman, either side of Van Dyke. But if so, that that's a different condition.
Yeah, I don't know what the opportunity to connect to that is or, or not. There's, if it's, if it is what it is, or if someone actually could tap in, I, I don't know.
Then do we have to worry about annexation?
Well, you can't be annexed by another township.
Other county too.
Yeah.
Actually, I think there, I, I'm pretty sure that if it's across county, that it, I think the state decides. I looked that up.
Yeah, the state, the state ultimately approves any annexation, but, um, yeah, the, uh.
Is Elmont a charter township?
I don't think so.
Well, they probably aren't big enough to be.
Yeah. The, um, I mean, the village obviously is a village.
It's a city end village, I believe.
But you have, it has to be contiguous property in order to be annexed. It can't, you used to be able to annex non-contiguous property. You can't do that anymore. They changed the law back in the eighties, I think. So, um, you know, if somebody were tapping into that, I don't know if it would be subject to some kind of four twenty-five agreement or what. But, uh.
If they're gonna develop commercials all the way down Van Dyke, there's gotta be future plans to increase the sewage flow.
Yeah, I mean, Elmont might have plans for it, or they could just be planning on doing it on sewer or septic and wells, I don't know, but, um.
So, for purposes of what we need to do now, are we all okay with showing the two kind of considerations for that property? The land or the farm property?
What two considerations would you be talking about?
Is.
Office and commercial, or leaving it the same in commercial? Agricultural and commercial?
I think she's talking about a portion or the full.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Either, you know, people can react, either it would be one of three things. We don't want them to do anything.
Just stay.
Right. Or they could react and say, hey, we're not showing any, I don't think we're gonna be presenting anything on commercial for that property, it'd just be office. And it would be the Van Dyke part of it, whatever that is, office and the whole rear sweepiness is, or the whole thing. Are you all right with?
Well, I, I'm not opposed to just leaving it the way it is and just forget about it. This, we're trying to do something in a vacuum. There's really no request here to change it. I mean, we're.
Except from the property owner himself.
Well, there is, but that's not in writing. That's, you know, just.
It actually isn't writing several times.
It isn't writing, but not in official application.
Correct. Correct.
That's the kind of writing that I'm talking about. So we can have conversations in writing all day long, but until someone fills out an application, it's just, it's really nothing.
But it opens the door for somebody to more easily request something on a larger scale with a full property versus something a little more contained.
Right. And I would be happy to support a good plan. I, it's not that I'm opposed to commercial at that spot, I think that would be a good spot. But whether or not we should designate that as a future land use for commercial, I, I'm just, I guess I'm not committed to that. It was certainly impacted by all the things you brought and the potential that could come from large-scale property, you know, when you think about those. I would like to see something there. I'd like, you know, development or things like. Not that, I'd be happy to leave it the way it is, and we gotta address it in a year if somebody comes with a firm plan, application.
Well, then they can do that no matter what it's on.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Or what, no matter what it's on the future.
I, I think the vacuum effect could be diminished by asking.
By what?
The, the vacuum effect could be diminished by asking people at the, at the town hall. Uh, what I'll do is I'll try to put something together that you're gonna look at to say, yes, we'd be comfortable with that. And then.
Would be an option, but we're basically not trying to influence any way, one way or another.
We're trying to get feedback, so.
Joe, can I ask? And I, I keep looking at this. There's the corner of thirty-seven and Van Dyke. You have on this map, it's green.
Yeah, that, that's the, um, uh, driving range.
The what?
Driving range.
The driving range.
And miniature golf is in there.
Oh, yeah.
That was just showing that it's not, it's not planned commercial, but there's a non-residential
I see.
use on the property.
Got it. And then I, when I went back and was watching the meeting, and it was a really good discussion about these two properties that we've got all the little dots on. And it says potential industrial expansion area. What we talked about at the meeting was that it would definitely be IRO.
Yes, yeah.
So when we present this, well, whatever we're presenting, make it clear that it's IRO. And then because I don't think everybody got the survey, where we did a really good job trying to provide the information so people understand the difference when they see industrial. We're not talking, I mean, we don't have heavy industrial, and this is not even mid.
Yes, more like the.
This is more of your high-tech stuff.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and I, I've been thinking about how to actually talk about those areas, so I could present something to you on that, along with that bit on the corner there. Cause the idea behind the industrial expansion areas, as I understood it from our conversation, was that we're not putting it on the map as planning industrial, really. What we're saying is that if we reach a point where our industrial land has been diminished, then these are the most logical areas to consider redesignating as industrial at a future date. It's kind of the.
They haven't already been used.
Exactly. That's the, that's the framework that I think we were talking about. Is we're not saying, yeah, they could be rezoned to industrial tomorrow, it's all this other industrial land starts to get used up, then when we're looking at this again, these are the logical places to sit.
Are there any updated languages that people use for industrial that's more tech-based? We, we call it industrial and light industrial or?
Yeah, I mean.
Just change your frame of mind.
And Industrial Research Office is the, is the name of the district that we're talking about. But yeah, I mean, there are all kinds of names for industrial park-type zoning districts. If you look at ordinances, you know, district. You know, Detroit has Tech Village. That stuff. Or Tech Town, I'm sorry. Grand Blank Township has Tech Village. So yeah, there are lots of different things you can refer to it as, so this might be more of a technology expansion area or some tech research. No, it's not gonna be a cleaning mill or, or an abattoir or something.
And it'll be really not anything like the, the legacy properties there. Toys and.
Sure, yeah.
Romeo Rim.
Yeah, Romeo Rim.
Rim and Statewide.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's different than that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, industrial development has changed a lot last several decades, let's put it that way.
Even if our IRO went to like TRO for like tech, technology research office, something like, it just changes the, the way people think about it.
Think of that when we were redoing the, that's a really good.
Now that we've discussed Boardman and Van Dyke at length, what items remain, Joe?
I think everything else is, has basically been confirmed that that's what we meant to do.
I had a question, Joe. There is one more parcel. And we were talking about it today because the, the owner is, is trying to get refinanced. It's that, that I think she, I think Lisa might have sent out a, a note to you. It's, it's the southeast corner of the manufactured home district, just north of Sheena's. It's, it's been on the map as part of the manufactured home zoning, but it's of, like a duplex. And we went back in history and found that it's, Carol Regis, uh, at the time noted some things in the file that if it burnt down, it would not be able to be rebuilt.
Yeah, that was on the list that I put together.
It is, okay, so.
Because my question was, hang on.
Well, I know, I know Joe said the map is, the map rules.
Are you talking about, it's, it's like one little parcel on, it's basically McVicker.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do know which one you're talking about. And I did see Lisa's email, I just haven't had a chance to respond to it.
Yeah, it, it's just a weird thing, so now she can't get, not that that's, you know, just, just for clarification, I mean, how, how, we don't know how it came to be, but how do you handle things like that that just don't?
Yeah, it's a duplex, which, you know, wouldn't be allowed if we changed it to R one B or something, you know. I, they're not, I don't know if they're listed anywhere.
In fact, I had it noted, it's at seven one two seven one McVicker. One acre zone, current zoning, O I one.
That's, that's the zoning, but on the map, it's actually in the manufactured district, manufactured home district.
Really?
Yeah.
It's really weird.
It, it goes straight across and it's in, in with the manufactured home.
Was that intentional to make it okay to be a duplex? That's very.
I, well, it was built in nineteen hundred, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
You know, there's.
Certainly there was no zoning at the time. I mean, even New York City didn't have zoning at the time. It wouldn't, wouldn't for more than twenty years. You'd have to be zoned RM one for the duplex to be compliant with your zoning. There's actually two, two unit multiplexes listed there.
So if it is, obviously, if the map rules, what Dana was saying is it's stuffed in the, or Lisa, they've noticed it's stuffed in the manufacturing home district.
Yeah.
Then the LI one zoning district is not correct. But could we change it to LI one because it's surrounded by the other little LI ones? And treat it as a non-conforming use because it's in the essence?
Well, it's a non-conforming use in the crime district. I don't know, LI one would necessarily be the, that wouldn't help them with their situation necessarily. One thing I'll note is that on the future land use map, it's actually moderate density residential.
Okay.
Parcel.
All right.
So we could, we could certainly carry forward the moderate density residential designation. I mean, we're not changing any of the residential designations really, so that would move forward. As far as how to handle it, I mean, potentially in the property, I guess. Or we don't really have a class A, class B distinction in our non-conforming uses. Some communities do. If you're, they'll establish that any existing home in a district where they're not permitted anymore is a class A use and can be reconstructed as though it were a permitted use.
Okay.
That, I have seen that done in quite a few communities, but we don't have that.
Yeah.
So, these are some things to consider. Now, as far as our non-conforming standards, I would have to look at what it says in terms of what can be rebuilt and what can't. But there's probably some sort of cost of construction threshold, is my guess. As there usually is.
So is that something you look at and?
Yeah, I can talk to Dana about it. I, I gotta respond to Lisa's email anyway, so.
Okay.
Joe, could you, since you put this together on this little grid, could you explain the middle one? Where, which I think is the, based on kind of our thinking so far, where we would end up changing the acreage?
Yeah, so the top one.
It's the middle one?
Yeah, the top one is what this future land use map has on it in terms of acreage and how much of that is vacant. in terms of acreage and how much of that is vacant. The middle one is the net change based on this map where we discussed what to change on the future land use map. And then the right column is the new total of acreage with, in parentheses, the new total of vacant. And, uh-
So does this mean as a result of this process, we've added 67.5 acres of industrial?
Yeah.
And then we've added 132 acres as potential IRO expansion?
Yes.
Okay. And we've-
We've added almost exactly the same on commercial.
Correct. That makes sense.
Less than a third of an acre different.
The, we went up in the office, but that is because of the Henry Ford?
Yeah, the, the Henry Ford and the Boardman Corner.
Correct. And that would be the whole corner?
That's the whole corner. It takes in all 17 acres of that property, yeah.
And then, commercial uses and planned rural, that's minus the Henry Ford.
Yeah, exactly. We took the Henry Ford out of that. And now it's in office, so that acreage went down substantially. Almost by half.
So what's the 2194 remaining? Is that the ball course? The mini golf place?
Yeah, the, the driving range, yep. And the only reason it's 21.9 acres is we took the testing facility completely out of the picture because that's just obviously its own. Um, obviously that, that acreage total would be a lot higher if the testing facility was included.
The greatest net changes have to do with industrial.
Yes.
And we managed to do that, I believe, so it's all pretty much either directly abutting or very close to the express.
Yes. Most of it's directly abutting.
Which is pretty much where it makes sense.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, in some cases, the future land use plan from the last plan didn't match the existing zoning. Sometime, and there are points where we updated it, future land use map to match. There's a little bit of industrial that wasn't future land use plan for industrial, but it's already built.
Joe, I got a question for you. The middle section, industrial new total, it says here you got 741.66 and then it says 198.51 vacant by parcel.
Right, so we're taking parcels that are entirely vacant.
I'm sorry?
We're, we're looking at parcels that are entirely vacant there as opposed to parcels where there's like a little bit of development in one corner and then there's a huge amount of land that isn't developed but could be. So there is prob, there is more vacant industrial land than this number indicates. It's just not on its own parcel. And in some cases, particularly south of 33 Mile, it's like these long bowling alleys, sometimes with like a jog over in the middle of them. They're very awkward parcels. If you put a bunch of them together, you could put another Cory Road down there. But individually, their rears are extremely difficult to access. So functionally, even though they're vacant, not really available land for development. At the moment, anyway. If somebody put them together, they would become vacant.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of wetland, I think, issues in certain areas.
There, there's one area particularly as you get close to M53 and you want to go all the way to the back of these real long parcels, you have to build a bridge to get to the back of the parcel, which is probably prohibitively expensive.
Like where Esco, I think where Esco is that very first parcel, the roofing company.
Yep.
Just going in, I mean, just finishing up, you know, it's been a long.
Yeah, there's a ton of land behind that building.
Yeah.
And it's just not accessible.
Right.
So there's, there's some additional land, some of this, some of that acreage is just not particularly useful.
Right.
As currently configured. So we should be stuck with parcels that are just totally vacant.
So can I ask questions about your, um, your memo?
Yes, because we've got to finish out talking about it.
Right. So we have all these existing goals and objectives.
Correct.
Right. And we also have, you know, we're actually, where it talks about the planning areas, more information about what we're eyeing for each of the planning areas. So then we're going to go forward and present this kind of what we're thinking. And then we're going to make, assuming, some actual recommendations at that point to the, the board. When we're making recommendations, like these specific future land use map changes, are we also looking to make any things that would, because of that, that would change the goals and objectives?
Yeah, 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 exactly, yes.
So we would be coming forth with both? Okay. Then when we started all this, so we had a proper framework, even though we were focused on commercial and industrial, you handled it like a regular master plan review.
You have to, yeah.
Correct. And we had all of that data that you provided, like it was updated populations and demographics based on the 2020 survey or census and updated SEMCOG information. It's not on this page, but it's in the master plan.
That would be in the master plan update.
You would put, dump all that in there.
It's already in there. We've got, we've set up the template document and all that information is already in there.
Okay, good. So, good. So that we're, we're not wasting all that good information.
Right.
And then would we, we would also then go through all the other parts to make sure that whether anything should be changed or not?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
For instance, and just, you know, there was that very specific language in the planning area discussion about the area around the Henry Ford parcel. And, I mean, I think we need to note in there that we've actually saying, yep, it's either going to be reused as a hospice, hospital facility as it has been, or it's going to be an office of some kind.
Yeah.
So we go through the whole thing?
Right.
Okay.
And then I think, you know, we have kind of a blanket note that says, you know, we'll focus on certain areas and certain use categories and, you know, other portions of the previous plan carry forward. We put all the goals that haven't changed right in there.
Right.
So that you don't have to go back and look to see what they were, you know?
Okay. And then I know, we talked briefly based on Mandy and Ripken and my discussion, but I think you wanted to capture, you know, how when we get through this, that then would lead to agribusiness?
Yeah, we're going to be making some sort of recommendation on, on agribusiness in this plan update to give us a basis for moving forward. Um, and we have a subcommittee that's been working on that issue. So obviously we have to let them do their work and come to the larger group with their thoughts and recommendations. Uh, I, I put it in the memo because I wanted to make sure that we were considering that and didn't get, you know, lost along the way because the current master plan really doesn't say anything about it.
Nothing.
And it, it obviously needs to be addressed. Um, so, um, you've got something that we're going to have to develop for that. Uh, and we'll let the committee meet and do its work and bring something to the larger planning commission.
And when I saw that, that actually reminded me that pretty much with all of the, kind of as I would over the course of the early months of our committee, every month I'd come and talk a little bit about what we did and where we were and, you know, how things stood after we took, made that big grid and-
Right.
We did our input and then the attorney weighed in. So I got that all collected because Darryl, you were on the planning commission and you weren't either. Right? So it, it has a lot of background. And I also went back to all the meetings and I found out where in the videos we were talking about that. So you guys could actually go and look at the, the videos too and kind of catch up to the thinking so far.
I know, that's awesome.
She's something else.
That's great.
I mean-
We, we really are thankful to have you, Amber.
They have to know what we know. Plus, I mean, that was, that was a year ago.
Right.
Where we were having the bulk of the discussion and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're not all sitting there looking at the videos all the time. So maybe it would be helpful to the rest of us to go back and-
Sure.
Take a peek at it again.
Other comments? I have a few comments regarding the master plan discussion memo, Joe. And Dana, feel free to weigh in on this. We talked a bit earlier today about it because I didn't have a complete and clear understanding. But I'm looking, first occurrence here under objectives for residential development about mid-page on page two. Yeah, second bullet item, it says promote the usage of open space cluster in planned unit development designs within all sections of the township. I thought we had changed our position on that in the past.
So we, we used to have an open space subdivision provision and a cluster subdivision provision. They were very similar, but not the same. So one of those was eliminated.
The cluster?
Yeah, so the terminology here should be updated and we have never had a planned unit development.
Do we even have that in our ordinance?
No, it's not in the ordinance. We-
Okay, well, the point of me bringing it up is regarding the text portion of the master plan. Just want to bring it to your attention. You're already aware of it. Did we update it? Did it coincide with your understanding of the current state? Correct?
Yep.
And then that appears in multiple places, you know, objectives, uh, let me see here. Yeah, objectives for natural environment, same thing, uh, second, uh, or first bullet item. And then moving on to a little bit different. Objectives for industrial development, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Last bullet says encourage more intense industrial uses which require outdoor storage or create other excessive ad, or, yeah, or create other excessive adverse impacts to be sufficiently buffered and located in the interior of the planned industrial district. When I read that, first thing that came to mind is we had that applicant not long ago that wanted to do a large acreage salvage lined auction site. And that was well along its way. And if I recall correctly, that what, uh, kind of put the kibosh to that, we had a person come in that actually had driven tow trucks and we were unaware of it. But he said the bait, the bigger risk than the leakage of fluids from the vehicles is the restarting, restarting of electrical vehicle fires. And so once we got wind of that, we were not in support of it and plus the applicant, they pulled their application. So, you know, that being said, um, I, I, I'm apprehensive about having anything in there that encourages a similar type use without specific conditions, you know, including, uh, I don't know how it would be worded exactly, but something that would include protections from adverse environmental impacts.
Sure. I mean, these are the exact goals that we're ultimately changing. So obviously we can work on the wording as we're doing that, but, um-
So I'm not sure, are you suggesting that this sentence encourages more industrial use?
Well, it's towards the most conservative condition, not encouraging. But if we are going to retain anything that encourages any type of that use remotely based on what we've experienced previously, that we have environmental protections because we know those two exist.
So, so this is saying that if you have those, they have to be sufficiently buffered. So if someone is planning those, they have to be sufficiently buffered. It's not encouraging them. It's, it's saying they, they, you know, they have to be a buffer zone.
Understood. But to me, buffering means that, you know, it's like an isolation zone. So it's a great protection, but I don't think it goes far enough based on what we experienced recently. So, so really you would just change the word encourage to something more, more strict or must have. Because you can eliminate the industrial uses and just, it would say encourage sufficient buffered and located in, that's what you're encouraging.
Yeah, I think-
Well, buffering is retained, but-
Right.
But change the word encourage.
No, I think he's talking about adding something additional to buffering.
Yeah, yeah, adding the, uh- Because it said, it also says located in the interior of the planned industrial areas, which means it would be surrounded by industrial and not like next to Orchard Grove, you know, like, like the salvage yards. So if something like the salvage yard came in and it was in the middle of industrial, like down one of those drives and surrounded by industrial, that might be okay. Well, we, it was in the industrial district and it was between Orchard Grove and the, um-
Right, it was right next to Orchard Grove.
Courthouse. And that's all, you know, that's the sewer and water district, but, you know-
217 acres or something.
I've said it more than once and I stand by it, that I look at each one of these special land use requests or rezoning requests as if I live next door. And, you know, we have neighbors not far away that live in our main township that are on well water. So I wouldn't want to increase the risk of, you know, I mean, that lot was going to be huge. I mean, the numbers that were presented, the amount of vehicles coming in and out, you know, fluid leakage and then plus the lithium ion battery, fire exposure and who knows what that results in, you know, with changes to groundwater or well water anyway. But, you know, it was a risk. And so, um, you know, I'm never going to be in support of something like that.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went through the industrial ordinances, we had updated the wording, we had accounted for environmental hazards and things like that. But we also, I thought, decided we wanted to shy away from those heavy uses in general and focus on those lighter uses, the IRO and things like that. I don't think we want to encourage intense industrial anywhere in our township.
Agreed.
Yeah, so.
So, so, um, yeah, I mean, okay, go on word, words by word here. Uh, encourage more intense industrial uses for the, your comment. We, we don't really want to encourage intense industrial usage. Outdoor storage, uh, I mean, that, if we're going to allow that based on what we now know, it should include specific conditions.
Which we have in our ordinance.
We do?
Don't we? That it has to be ancillary? Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, she's correct.
Okay, well, it has to be interior, but even though interior, it still could be a unregulated environmental risk. You know, because our industrial district is not that large. So, I mean, they could put something down, you know, one of those streets that's, it's not fully developed towards the rear of it, it'd be kind of out of sight, out of mind, but, you know, it's-
I have to relook at, at the language that we use, but I thought we had some of that in mind. I have to relook at, at the language that we use, but I thought we had some of that in mind with.
Well.
I seem to remember something about the wording having to do with hazardous.
Yeah, there, there is wording to that effect in there.
And we changed what we allowed.
So is that a change to the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, that's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think an item like this needs to be just worded differently so that it's saying something more along the lines of more intense industrial uses and uses requiring additional outdoor storage should be heavily buffered and located in the interior of planned industrial areas. Instead of opening with that sort of passive, encourage more intense. We're just saying this is what should be done instead of, I don't know, I don't know why you say encourage. You're not going to put something in your zoning ordinance that says, and maybe think about doing this, you're going to put something in your zoning ordinance that says, here's what you have to do.
Right.
Yeah, that, that could just be changed to require more intense
Yeah.
uses to sufficiently buffer, you know, their operations.
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
I just, I think, I think there's, there's a wording problem there.
Look, if you believe we've got sufficient protections, protections in the zoning ordinance, that, you know, since we're redoing the master plan, that the text portion, we have an opportunity to make that more closely aligned. Because it doesn't appear like it's aligned right now. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks for your input, Mandy. Any other items that commissioners would like to discuss regarding the master plan?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Joe, given where we're at and that you're going to be coming back with some things, do we wait until January to discuss the town halls?
I think so, yeah, let's get some, let's get a little bit more body to what we want to present there, figure out. Because, I mean, the month of February in Michigan is not a great time to invite people out of their houses to come to something in the evening. So it might be, we might be looking for March or April when it's a little more pleasant to, to come out. I, I do think that that can actually be a factor in attendance. And you can never plan down to the day, like what the weather's going to be. You might get a really chromy day in April, but you're at least improving your odds of not having an 18 degree, you know, high if it's in February, you know?
I mean, it's, it's kind of our next normal review is in 2026, so we'll be
Right, you'll be right on, on schedule.
Right, even though we could have done it and did do it at any time, we will be right on schedule.
Yep.
Just maybe something to start thinking about, not to have a big discussion, but an observation. There was a town hall was within the last year. I think it may have been in the summer of 2024 that they held a town hall with respect to a potential special assessment district down there for Mellon and Tating. I believe the engineer from your firm was there.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and the attorney was there and Frank and Mike Felbrook were there. And I mean, I was sitting over in the corner on the side. This place was packed.
Sure.
It was absolutely packed. And the people were standing, it was a pretty lengthy meeting. People didn't leave. And then I'm also remembering when we had the public hearing on the changes we were tossing around with regard to a chicken ordinance. That was also packed. I mean, a few of you guys were on vacation, but it was packed. So I suppose something to start thinking about is
Don't look at me.
What's the right venue? I mean, we want people to come. We want them to be able to stand up and look at the maps and, you know, hear the dialogue. How are we going to do it in here?
Yeah, I mean, you have to pick a room. It's this room, then you have to make it work. And a lot of people, then you've got to figure out what the flow becomes.
Is, is that town hall something that we would video? It was not videoed when we did that special assessment.
If it has more of an open house type structure, it's real hard to put on video because you've got conversations happening over here. I'd say probably not.
Well, is there any thought to you can get free meeting space at the, at the community center?
Yeah. Yeah, is that something that we can like?
Because certainly, I mean, I generally encourage communities to think about doing things outside of their hall. Because it's like, most people don't go to the hall very often. And, you know, like when they do, it's because they're paying their taxes or something. So, you know, getting it out into the community, I think is always a good idea.
It might be a thought. I mean, it wouldn't be making people drive really any further from where they've come in here.
Sure.
It's not like we're asking them to drive 10 miles away.
Yeah, as long as we convey that real well, I would, because I just am imagining a lot of people showing up here if it's not really clear.
That is another thing too. I mean, I'll put it out there and we can discuss it next month, but it's, a town hall is really only good if people know about it and they come. We didn't have, I mean, Joe thought it was remarkable that we got 400 people to respond to the survey. We really knocked ourselves out communicating that in advance every way we could. So how are we going to communicate forthcoming town hall?
We revisit chicken gate, rile the people up again, so they come out and then we talk about the master plan.
We were, we agreed to never say chicken again. I thought we
Well, I mean, and it, it almost, kind of what I'm thinking is, is that you, especially when it's going to be a one and done and it's not a whole month where a person can, uh, consider and take their survey. It's almost like, do we start communicating in February for a town hall that's going to be in May?
I think so.
It increases the chances of people knowing and being able to plan for it. I don't know the right answer, but
And I don't think that we, I think the, the only thing that, that I, looking back at it, that we, we should probably have done differently was I got a lot of people saying to me that it came in my tax envelope and I know that's not due until, you know, September or whatever. So I set it aside and then when I went to pay for it and opened it, I see that there's a survey thing. Now it's, it's too late to do the survey thing, so, you know, that
You should have used postcards.
Maybe, maybe something else.
Don't even look at your taxes.
I heard, I heard it.
I opened that thing the second it was my house.
I've already looked at it and I know, okay, this month I gotta, you know.
Yeah, me, me too, but, but I heard that more than once, that there were a lot of people that, you know, would have, would have otherwise.
I think there was an indication on the outside of the envelope that the survey was
Was inside, see, I couldn't remember if we did that or not.
I know we talked about it, but did it eventually happen?
I don't, I don't know either, yeah. That, that would be a way to
Big red stamp.
Big survey enclosed, yeah.
So certain to think about that.
Yeah. Start a rumor, we might regulate chickens.
I got a question regarding the town halls. When you did Washington Township, you had multiple, you compartmentalized. Yours was a complete master plan.
Yeah, there's not any, we're, we're very focused here, so.
So you think it's going to be one town hall?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay.
That's what's in the, that's what's in the scope anyway. And we'll put stuff online as well. We'll give them a period, a window where they can comment on.
That would be good.
Yeah, it's never too early to start talking about.
Okay, any more discussion regarding master plan? Hearing none, let's move on to agribusiness and agritourism. And just like to remind that the subcommittee is made up between Mandy and Marie and I. And we did have some discussion this week. And also Joe's been on CC on some of the written communication. So there's a plan for us to get together with you.
At some point, yeah, we have to figure out when that is.
Do you have any feelers premature at this point to try and identify a date?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys want to meet one more time and figure out what you want to talk about or
Probably the three of us should because it was kind of an add-on conversation Monday night.
All right, for the sake of time, we can regroup offline to figure out what works well. Okay, so anything else regarding agribusiness and agritourism that commissioners would like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, 5G ongoing discussion, anything new there?
Nothing new there. In fact, I think that it's probably long past due that the moratorium that's kept that on our agenda. We have 5G in the township. We're preempted on most of what we would do to, anyway. I just don't know that there's a purpose.
Is that, that's a board decision?
Yeah, Darryl, it was not this board, it was a previous board or even place without, and it was open-ended, it didn't have a end date, so.
Yeah, which I, I brought up last time that, you know, I, there, there should be some kind of end date.
There should be an end date to a moratorium, yeah. Should be a, a goal that you're working toward. And we don't really have a goal that we're working toward because there's really nothing we can do.
Right.
As a, as a municipality.
So, do I understand correctly, the reason we're leaving it on the agenda every month? It's more of a political thing?
Well, it's, it's, it's because you're supposed to be studying the issue in a moratorium in place.
Right.
I know there's at least one person in the township that's very passionate about 5G. If we remove that from the agenda, I don't think it would be received well at all.
I mean.
I, I don't know that we can base our decisions on that. I think we have to base our decisions on what's actually logical and what can be done, so.
I'm just, I'm just sharing that, you know, and I'll go with whatever the majority.
Okay, before we, 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 maybe at the next meeting, I will bring some kind of wording from, maybe Christine Anderson can, can weigh in or whatever Joe thinks is the right way forward, discuss it with the board and, and, but yeah, I think there has to be some kind of, it's been on there for
Right, and if you were challenged on it by a, someone who was working on 5G infrastructure, it would never
Right. Okay.
And they can just put it on a, on a existing telecommunications line anyway and not even talk to us about it, so.
All right, I'll do some, some, some talking to the, talking to the board.
Okay, thank you. So any more on 5G? Okay, item 11, any new business?
I have something I want to bring up. I don't know what section it would go best in, but I wanted to start a conversation about large-scale data centers and AI data centers before a proposal comes to Bruce Township. I personally am not in favor of a development like that coming to our community. The resources they use for water and electricity is excessive, there's noise. They have very few jobs long-term for people. There's been a few places in Michigan that have already been dealing with this. Saline, Michigan, for example, denied a rezoning request, the developer sued. And then now it's approved with some conditions after that legal settlement. And I still, Howell, Howell, they have a, a six-month moratorium right now against the data centers because a big proposal came in. So I think it's something that we should proactively be talking about. We have a lot of open land here and we should get our ducks in a row while we can.
There's a potential proposal in Springfield Township as well, which is directly west of here in Oakland County, several townships away. Cal Cask also had one, they never got to the application stage, but they had some town halls, which were
Washington.
Quite exciting.
There's, there's one for Washington at the 32 and where Myers was going to come.
Yeah, where the Meyer property, I think Meyer does not own that property anymore.
Apparently not, I thought they did.
I got some details to share on that one.
Can you jump one thing?
Go ahead.
The first one you mentioned was at Saline?
Yeah, Saline.
Yeah, they, there was actually something that came out in the Bridge News today on that and the MPSC is holding a hearing.
And which one?
Saline.
Yes, yeah, the Michigan Public Service Commission is holding a hearing on it. The Attorney General has been trying to get it converted to a contested hearing as opposed to a standard hearing. I don't know if she was successful in doing that or not.
Yeah, so anyhow, I just wanted to, I thought you said
But it's a, it's a, it's definitely a very germane issue for our time. Our saving grace is that we don't have a thousand acres to put it on, um, which is what the Howell Township site is 1,077 acres. It's a massive, massive piece of property.
Yeah, I got to talk to a clerk that's over where Mount Holly is and they've been fighting it for like two years. They've been fighting this data center that's trying to move in, but they have a lot of water. They're near a, some, some large water. I don't know with the one that's, you know, that they're trying to, they're talking about at the corner of 32 and 53, where would, where, I mean, there's a small creek, but I don't know how much water they, they require, but.
I think they run it 24 hours.
But on, on the subject of moratoria, that would be a potential item for one, if you were going to legitimately study the issue and how you want to handle it.
Yeah.
Give yourself eight months or something to study the issue and simply have a moratorium on it while you're doing it. So that if anybody comes in, you can say, we're studying the issue and how to handle it. See us when, when we're done.
Yeah, now what is the benefit of that versus, when we were talking about it, when I was talking about it with this, this clerk, she said that, that they, there wasn't much benefit to, to doing that versus nothing because of something to do with the state. It was over my head for, for the legality portion of it, but, but, but they were saying that, that really wasn't. But if, if, you know, if you suggest we do that, then.
There are a lot of communities that have data processing centers in their zoning ordinances as a permitted use in an industrial district. Just because, uh, they put it in there when the internet was like just becoming public, you know? And it was these small buildings that, you know, they didn't really use much electricity or anything. But these, these data centers, particularly to support artificial intelligence or in some cases so-called artificial intelligence, more of a buzzword is applied to some things than it is an actual, actually what it is.
Are there smaller ones? I mean, are, are there, do they have to be none or take up hundreds of acres? I mean, is there anything?
Couldn't somebody come in and offer for a pretty penny for their property and try to take over that large area?
That, that is a possibility, yeah, it's something that you'd have to consider. I mean, obviously it's not zoned for that at all. So that would be a major hurdle first place, but that's certainly the largest site in the township.
You know, if they're, if these concerns are buying a farmland to do it, probably running into zoning ordinance issues all over.
Yeah, sure.
Most farmland doesn't, you know, capture industrial uses. From what I've read, there, I thought I read something about the minimum acreage they're looking at is 250, 200 acres.
Yes, generally, that would be pretty small for some of these facilities. But yeah, they are looking for Yes, generally, that would be pretty small for some of these facilities. But yeah, they are looking for very large.
For reliable sources, I obtained some information about what's going on in Washington Township. It all started per, I'm sorry? Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, all started per, um, I get the record newspaper and I saw the public hearing notification, which is going to be next Thursday on the 11th, at Washington Township, where the developer actually, yeah, it's a real estate developer is going to be announcing the, um, rezoning request. It's, I think it's being presented as light industrial and it's, uh, about 310, 320 acres. And it is from the southeast corner of 32 Mile Road and, uh, M53 where Myers was going. And there's not going to be a Myers. They've occupied all that property all the way over to the, uh, airport and they're going south to about 31 and a half mile road. And it's, you know, it's got some irregular, um, property boundaries. So, as it was explained to me, this is the one location that Washington Township has for their industrial district. And, um, you know, this is potentially pretty lucrative for them because comparatively with the AI, um, technology data center compared to another idea that was being floated around was, I think was Chrysler was going to do some, uh, a huge amount of warehousing. And there was concerns about traffic, especially coming east and west along 32 Mile Road, uh, over to I-94. So this would be much less traffic. So that's a plus along with the revenue stream for Washington Township. But there's nuisance and environmental impacts to these types of development. You know, if you, any of you have ever been at a data center, I mean, non-AI, I mean, they run them cool. Computers do not perform well in warm environments. So basically, these huge buildings, and for anybody's, I'll send you the couple links I have. They're easy reads, and if you distribute, uh, distribute them to the planning commission and, and probably the board as well. You know, these things are huge and, uh, I already talked about energy. So one of the topics that came up in the discussion I had is, well, what about energy usage? Because the, uh, one of the links talks about the magnitude of order of energy that these facilities gobble up. You know, we're talking about in excess of 300 acres, which may seem small, but DTE, their, uh, response is that, well, we have sufficient capacity and, you know, we welcome the opportunity to service this development. So, you know, that's kind of music to their ears. They convert existing capacity, reserve capacity to a revenue stream. So we're on, I got to think somewhat of a common grid with probably at least a portion of Armada, Elmont, Bruce, portion of likely northern end of Washington Township, likely some Ray. So what happens? You know, we know that we have large portions of undeveloped property. So what happens when developments come along in our communities and DTE says that, well, you know, we really don't have reserve capacity. So, you know, there's going to have to be a surcharge to bring in, you know, more substations, more power lines to service. And so, um, in response to that comment I made to, um, my source, response I got was that, well, oh, they're planning on having a, a large portion of their energy generated onsite. Nothing's for free. How is energy generated onsite? Natural gas generators. So, um, similarly, I mean, has Sumco weighed in? The amount of increased gas demand and what that, how that'll impact the grid for, you know, surrounding community? And then also, you know, emissions, exhaust emissions from those generators, prevailing winds are to the southeast. So, you know, it's going to probably minimal impact of emissions to Bruce Township. But, um, again, I approach these things, if I live southeast and, um, you know, I, I wouldn't want, you know, the increased emissions coming my direction. And also the amount of heat generated, because each one of these is going to have just a huge quantity of air conditioners cooling the facility. So, I mean, what about a microclimate? You know, you're, you're throwing all this heat in the atmosphere off of 300 acres and sending it south and east. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna have an effect. I, I'd bet on it. So that being said, you know, the reason I'm partly passionate on this is I'm also a property owner in Washington Township. And, um, so, you know, I attend their meetings when their decisions affect my personal interests. But, you know, in this case, I think what they are proposing to do, it, it's likely they're going to do it. And they know that they need to have uh, specific conditions to try and mitigate the stuff that I just shared and likely more. But, you know, attendance at their planning commission meeting, even if you're not speaking, attendance speaks something in itself. So if you're passionate about it at all, consider attending.
Or just for the information. I mean, like I said, you know, we're, you know, this is something that's relatively new and, you know, I think we're all interested.
In fact, I just got the record today and I just flipped through it and they did have, not front page and not specific to any community, but they did have a, uh, an article about this very thing.
I'm, uh, sharing a link with Dana that she can distribute to the planning commission right now. It's got some good information on it.
Okay, look for that, everybody. I will forward that on to.
All right. Sorry for going along on that. So, um, obviously I'm passionate about, so thanks for listening. So anyway, any other new business? Okay, uh, comments from committees and consultants? We already covered agribusiness. It's from one committee. Anything else? Okay, comments from commissioners?
I have two.
Go ahead.
When we talked about lighting last month, I know we're still going to have the public hearing coming up, but did you say you were going to talk to the board about, um, some ideas around, um, you know, enforcement and was there something?
Prevention and enforcement. We had talked about that. I have not had any discussions.
Okay, so it's still, you got it on the list?
Yeah.
Okay. The second question I had, and this is partly educational to me, um, but I know that, you know, we have existing ordinance language, in the zoning ordinance, about, um, storage and dumping and all that stuff. And I, this was before I was on the commission. I think you did some updates or took some actions to help eliminate, um, some of the unsightly outdoor storage in, uh, in the industrial corridor. So my question involves something that's not industrial property, but that it's an R1B and it's, I'm assuming some kind of grandfathered use or non-conforming use, which is what I know is, I mean, there's a beautiful house there. It's gorgeous. But on the other side of it, it's where, it appears to be where the garbage, um.
Busy Bee.
Busy Bee, the garbage kind of.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Pick-up places. And I, I, I mean, if I look at the air hill and look down on it, this is enlarged. We wouldn't allow that in the industrial corridor.
It's been, it's been an issue. It's been on the radar for, for years. Carol Regis was, was dealing with it.
Yeah, I remember.
It's been an ongoing thing. I think Mike has reported it to the state, if I'm not mistaken. He'd be better speaking to that than me, but.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, when I look at the property line, and I could be wrong. I don't want to be misspeaking. But there are all these big dumpsters that I'm assuming are associated with the waste disposal company. But the dumpsters are on the M-Dat property. I mean, do we as a, I, I, I don't know if this is a board issue or I'm wanting to make sure that I understand our zoning ordinance properly and how this could exist.
Yeah, um.
Not in R1B.
Yeah.
I don't know, it, it, like I said, why it ever happened, became there. Do you know anything about that, Rick?
Nothing. I don't know anything about this company. I don't want to make sure that comes across. I'm aligning them, but how does this exist?
I, I lived there for 30 years across the river and, um, they've been there ever since I've been there. Um, uh, they used to burn things, which really upset me. But, uh, but it is, it is blight. I mean, it's, it's worse than that because it's these bins that, um, you know, there's rats and mice and I'm just glad that there's a river in between them and and they don't burn anymore.
I drove by there today. I made a purpose, a point of looking over and I'm going like, this is disgusting.
It is. Really bad. And it never really changes for the better. Um, you know, one will move and two more come in and, you know, one, so it, it never really gets, gets better.
Oh, I guess my question is to you, Joe, you know, is there anything that we can do as a planning commission to help correct that or is it just not something we can do?
We don't really have a enforcement role on the planning commission, unfortunately. Um, are we, we are more on the front end of things. Um, once something is happening, it's kind of out of planning.
Supervisor enforcement issue, right?
Yeah, like I said, I, I know that he's reported it to Eagle. Um, I, I don't, you know, that end of things, Joe said, I'm not really familiar with what, what you can do on that end. Um, but yeah.
It's just really sad that we, we, the township at large has worked so hard to improve our industrial corridors so attractive businesses want to come. And, you know, make improvements to our ordinances, our, our zoning ordinance, and then something like this exists.
Yeah, and you can see right, the, the overpass allows you to see right down into all of the dumpsters for extra.
Are they still running a business out of there?
Uh, I, I really not. I, I know that these things move and there's a lot of, you know, junk in there, but I don't know what.
So anyhow, I thought I might learn something more, but, but thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a long, um, issue that I don't know how to get resolved.
Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I think you assumed that was the, the motion.
That was my motion. Okay, I'm making a motion for adjournment. Randy seconded.
Nine o'clock?
At nine, at 9:00 PM. Are we offline?
All in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? Yeah, before, before we do the all in favor on it, I just wanted to, uh, as mentioned earlier, this is my first opportunity to take and chair a meeting. So had some rough moments. So thanks for helping me along.
You did great. You did great, Rick. You did great.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.